I'd like to call the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees Meeting for December 16th to order at 6:01. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call, please.
Dan Gaffney.
Here.
Michelle Ginn.
Here.
Dan Green.
Absent.
Mary Himberg.
Here.
Alison McDankey, Susan Absen.
Marilyn Homroy.
Here.
Ann Rose.
Here.
Julie Mary.
I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
I saw no second.
It was a tie. Go for them. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion is passed. Call to the public.
Okay. On December 7th, the holiday boutique sale was held at this room. We brought in about $2,300. Interestingly enough, half of it was books and half was the purses and the children's illustrations.
Excellent.
So this means for the entire 2019, we brought in $19,796, which is about the same as last year, but $1,235 of that was from non-books. So the Friends are going to consider doing something in addition, maybe a holiday boutique. They've talked about handbags. I think they're probably still deciding what they're going to do. But we still have one children's illustration in the lobby, $25. Somebody would like to purchase it. We sold the others. So we would love to sell that one also. And then starting January 1st, 2020, Laura Perkins will be the library liaison. She was going to come tonight, but she sounded quite ill on the phone, and we both agreed she should stay home.
Keep those germs.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi. My name is Alan Panther, and I'm a partner at Yellow Yellow CPAs, and I'm also a resident of Independence Township. So I'm here tonight because I want to share these copies of these books with you. So I generally do audits. I do audits of governments, libraries, those kinds of things. I've been doing that for over 30 years now. But the most important part is that earlier this year, we were contracted by the Library of Michigan to update a public library financial management guide. So this guide was completed this summer by our team, as I led the team that did that. And so the guide is a revision of the guide that I wrote five years ago. So five years ago, I was also contracted by the Library of Michigan. I didn't live in Independence Township at the time, so I only lived here a couple of years. So the 2019 guide is a revision and updated 2014 guide. So I just wanted to come and introduce myself. I wanted you to be aware of the guide. I wanted you to be aware of the fact that I live here and really just kind of make your acquaintance. So if I could, I'd like to pass you off copies of these.
Thank you.
And these are publicly available on the Library of Michigan's website.
Nice to have them delivered.
I feel so special.
Thank you.
We got a couple of numbers.
I'll make sure that they get those.
All right. So there you go.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Welcome to Clarkston.
And Independence Township.
And your library.
Come back and visit us anytime.
With that, we'll close the call to the public at 6:06. We have 10 items on the consent agenda. I'll accept a motion. Someone approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Any one of the 10 items that you want to deal with individually? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Okay. We have library statistics.
Okay. I'm supposed to point out to you that under total visitors for November, there is an NA. Apparently, the power outage we had November blew our people counter for a period of time, and so we have no count for November. It has since been repaired, so we are now able to count in December, but unfortunately, for November, we have no numbers for that.
It sort of skews the eight hours.
It does. It does. And it's frustrating, but it's just one of those, you know, technology is grand as long as it's working. We are down a little bit in computer users as we have been, but we are up in wireless users yet again significantly. We're down a little bit in information questions. We are up significantly in all of our programming, though you'll notice growth of 275, 130, 215%. Big numbers. These are numbers for November of this year as compared to November of last year. So nice growth there.
Did we run extra programs, or is that just better attendance?
Some of both. A little bit of both, yes. But we're doing well this year. Adrian also would like me to point out in her volunteer report that since she has been tracking, we have accumulated 299 and a half volunteer hours. Once again, they are doing things such as helping with our outreach to new residents. They address the envelopes and that sort of thing. They help prepare for children's programming. They help by straightening shelves and just a variety of tasks, so that's been really helpful for us.
Excellent. Now for the library director's report.
Okay. Just sort of general information. On Wednesday, November 27th, the library closed at 4:30 due to power outage. That actually is not the power outage that blew up the people counter. It was the one that was coming in earlier in the month. That was the second power outage in November. But we did have to close early because of that. Next item, the library received the annual E-Rate check of $3,557.63. E-Rate is the federal funding that helps pay for our library broadband internet access for the public. The amount is calculated using a formula that takes into account the number of students in the school district eligible for the free lunch program. In terms of project updates, at their meeting on November 12th, the city council appointed Ann Rose and Nancy Moon to the library board to fill their two positions for the term beginning January 1st of 2020. The township board will review the requests for reappointment and application for appointment to the library board for their five positions at their meeting on December 17th, which is tomorrow. Michelle Ginn and Mary Himberg have declined reappointment in order to spend more time with family. We are so grateful for their hard work, loyal service, and advocacy on behalf of the library, and I have, on behalf of the board, will certificates of appreciation for each of you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can I say something?
I have enjoyed working with you.
Yes, and I just wanted to say that I started out, and I think you did, with the concept of a district library. And so it's been a long road, but I think with the leadership we've had from Julie, it's just been a great, a great thing to be a part of. And what I really want people to understand is how much we appreciate the funding that we've been given by the voters and how much respect we have for those funds and how we spend it thoughtfully and carefully and let a lot of... It's always the goal is what's best for the library. And it's just, it'll be fun to watch what's ahead.
I will be watching also.
We're going to try to come to the budget meetings if we can.
Not critiquing, though, just watching.
You can always, you know, if you have some input, we're always open for...
Oh, you will see me around.
Well, that's good. No, because I wanted to echo too what Julie said. It has really been good working with both of you, and I will definitely miss having you down here just under the table with me.
I'll just miss the spirit of the board. The board, along with Julie, we just support each other and encourage each other and work and respect each other. It's really been a wonderful...
Yeah, and I have been on boards where that level of respect for other members was not always present. This is much more pleasant than that.
We know the difference.
We thank you both.
Our pleasure.
Okay. Next item on my...
Number two.
Yes. I've been working with the library's attorney on fund balance policy and fund balance resolution. Due to her current workload, this has taken longer than anticipated, but we intend to have those prepared for board review and approval early in the new year and well ahead of our audits. Next item, the library board's performance review subcommittee completed the library board's self-review process at the November meeting and the library director's review on November 22nd. The library's department heads and I have also been completing the staff's review process, which is considered complete when I have read each review and made notes of the items to address, for example, training requests, policy updates, et cetera, for the coming year. This time, I only have very few left to read, like maybe three or four, so we're almost done. Next item, each year, we schedule a meeting with our MERS representative to give the full-time employees an opportunity to review this benefit and ask any questions. When I called to schedule this session, I was told that MERS is now offering a new IRA program open to any individual employed by an organization with a MERS program. This new program is also open to the employee's spouse, and once the account is open, can be kept by those individuals. They can continue to make contributions and grow their investments even after separation from the organization. I am gathering more information and would like to consider sharing this opportunity with the entire staff.
That's excellent.
Very good. In terms of collaborations, as Nancy mentioned, the Friends of the Library holiday sale on December 7th was a huge success. The Purses with a Purpose, children's artwork, and of course, the gently-used books brought in $2,355. In addition, the bake sale hosted by the Church of the Resurrection had record sales. The church presented the library with a generous donation from their bake sale proceeds that will be used toward children's books.
Well, that was nice. It's a win-win.
It is a win-win. It's so nice. It's graphic for them, and the money that they raise is used to do good in the community. Its purpose is to fund projects that they think are important, and they usually include us in those proceeds.
And it provides treats.
We have opposed to treats. No, no, we love treats. Next item, as part of the library's hardwood training, we conducted a community conversation on behalf of the city of Clarkston regarding the possibility of a single trash hauler contract. This opportunity for residents of the city of the village of Clarkston to discuss the issues surrounding this idea in a neutral environment was very helpful to the city manager and council. This is currently just an idea, so this allows people to express their thoughts, ideas, and concerns before an investigation even begins. We delivered thorough notes on the discussion, and the city will do further research and provide a report to their residents in about six months. This was a really nice project, and it was funny because some of the residents who were there seemed a little surprised. They kept saying, "Well, isn't there more of a plan?" And I kept saying, "No, no. Jonathan and the council brought me in to get you started having this conversation so that they know what the concerns are before..." This is not a rollout. This is a, you know, should we even be doing this kind of conversation? Lots of good information was gathered. It was a really good, really good conversation. It was nice. Last, the library's community meeting room is the location for Independence Township's precinct four during elections. The 2020 election calendar includes March 10th, August 4th, and November 3rd. In addition to using the room the day of the election, workers drop off equipment the day before and set up the room so that it is ready when the election team arrives early in the morning on voting day. The recent special election was an opportunity for the township to test some procedures and new equipment, so we anticipate three smooth election days in the coming year. Think Mickey might...
Yes, we do.
Say that it went really well? She's part of the election team that works here at the library.
Yes, and we are here at 6:00 a.m. on election day, and everything is open for us, set up, ready to go.
Right eye and bushy-tailed, too, I have to say.
Okay. Well, this will be a challenge with new aspects of the voting procedure.
It will be. Although it went, it was very, you know, light turnout for the one that we just had in November, but it was good for us to get a feel for the new equipment, the new programming and everything.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Regular business. Number one, Envisionware.
Okay. This is actually Bill's request, so I know what it is, and I can answer the questions to the best of my ability. I think I can handle it. Let's see how we go. Hopefully, you want to ask anything that I have figured out. Okay. So this is the Envisionware Coin and Bill Acceptor End of Life Replacement. 2019 is the manufacturer end-of-life on our coin and bill acceptors, known as CBAs, that we purchased in 2010. There are two options available in the replacement of CBAs that the library is using for copy machine and print payment. Option one is a direct replacement of the two CBAs that we have with current versions. This would cost $4,982.46, and we would be exactly where we are currently with updated hardware. Option two is replacing our two CBAs with a single CBA and an Envisionware product called Copy Payment Manager with enclosed information that allows additional control of monies used in payment. The solution also includes a credit card terminal, which will allow payment for either copy or print to be made via credit card as well. The solution is at a cost of $5,938.38. This will allow greater flexibility for patrons to self-serve their prints and copies and make the cash accounting simpler for the administrative staff. The caveat of either solution is that there is a rebate on each CBA that can only be received if the order is placed before December 31st of 2019. Order placement does not mean that the order will be billed in 2019 and will be billed in 2020, not on that year's budget. Upon request, the other libraries that are using the software hardware solution are quite happy with the CPM, that's the option two, solution presented. Other solutions by Bibily Oteko were considered, but as they did not interface with our current environment, those options were discarded. So this is actually a budgeted item in 2020. However, the original project budget was for $5,000, and the proposed solution, he would like to go with option two, is different from the originally quoted solution, has a higher cost than budgeted. Bill does have a break-fix budget in the 2020 980 equipment line of $10,000, and he would like to use $1,000 of that to cover the over...
Cost of budget.
Yeah, so it's already, he said he thinks that would be a good use of that $1,000 of that break-fix budget.
I think so, since credit cards are...
It's the future.
Yeah, it definitely is. Yep. So the request that he's making is for you to approve the Copy Payment Manager solution number two, even though it is a higher budget, and approve him to use some of that break-fix budget in order to accommodate the higher price. He is also wanting to make sure that he has your permission to order now, even though it leaves only 2020, so that's what the request is from him this evening.
So he called it a rebate, but are those numbers the after-rebate prices?
Yep. Yep. That would be the final cost.
Now, is this the cost until we replace it again, or is this a yearly cost?
No, this would be the cost till we replace it again. So I would anticipate, now, there will probably be maintenance on it. The maintenance should be what we already budgeted, that we put in the 933 line, which is the equipment maintenance budget. There's always some sort of software maintenance on everything you do. We are currently paying for software maintenance on the system that we have, and this should be...
And we would expect another 10-year break time.
Oh, it hopes so. Yep. Yep. I have to admit, the one that we currently have is a very simple system mechanically on the inside, but it is a little finicky, so we're hopeful that the new ones that they've created are a little less finicky than the one that we currently have. We may be, if they can be careful.
So the main advantage of the higher-priced one is the ability then for patrons to directly use their credit cards. And we've already been switching to try to make more things available by credit card anyways, so...
So we currently have payment at the circulation desk, and then we have payment online, so you can pay for things online. And then we also have it at both of the new self-checks that we just put in a little bit earlier this year. So this will be one more step in that process. And one of the things that he's excited about with this is because of the payment management, obviously, we'll still have to empty the coins and bills out, but because of the credit card payment option, that is all handled electronically, so it can be tracked as reports and things like that, not like you have to go empty the money out. So it should reduce the amount of counting that we also do, because so many people...
Would prefer that.
Would prefer to pay with a credit card, and what they're doing right now is coming to circulation in order to pay with a credit card. And we can put money on their library card that they can use for paying for their prints, but they have to tell us how much they want. So they have to come up and say, "Well, I'm going to put $5 worth of money on my library cards if I can pay for my prints."
So this...
This would streamline that process. They would be able to just put their card...
So then you don't have staff spending time.
Yep.
And you're also then better able to, because of the way it's set up electronically, you're better able to track...
Track it. Yep.
As opposed to having somebody like Erica or whoever create a report?
Yes.
Okay.
That's possibility of a...
Yeah, if it's coming directly to Michigan.
Yeah, good thing.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I would move that we approve the ordering of the Copy Payment Manager solution, option two, proposed by Envisionware as presented, to be paid from line 980 equipment in 2020 in the year that is scheduled.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the ordering of the Copy Payment Manager, option two, proposed by Envisionware as presented, to be paid for out of the 2020 budget in line item 980. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. That was clearly explained.
Thank you. I did my best.
Number two.
Okay. Circulation policy update for new streaming devices. Now, this is coming from Bill, so he has aye in here, but I didn't do this, he did this. In 2018, Bill did a program on cutting the cord, which is a term used by people who are getting rid of cable television in favor of Internet TV using services that are for pay, such as Netflix, Hulu, Philo, and Disney Plus, to free services such as Pluto TV and Crackle, and also library-specific services such as Camtasia and Hublot. The program was a success, with questions brimming over from the patrons who came to the program. We repeated the program in November of 2019, where there was a smaller audience, but just as many questions as the streaming services had a shakeup of their own this year. In response to all the devices available, Bill asked the Friends of the Library and the fall wish list for some money to establish a collection of streaming and antenna-related products for testing that the library would house. Since then, the library has added a collection of streaming devices to the circulating collection and needs to establish their circulation policy. Encloses a copy of the board approved policy with a new line added for the new devices, including their loan period and their fine structure. So I'm going to translate that in English for those of you who are not cord cutters.
It's a really good idea.
Basically, what he has done with Friends of the Library money, thank you, Friends of the Library, he has Roku devices, fire sticks, antennas, things like that. You come into the library, you can check them out for a week. At least that's what we're asking you to approve, is the length of time and checkout period. They can check them out for a week. It comes in a little box. It's got all the instructions. You take it home, you hook it up to your television, you try it out, and see if you like it. If you don't like it, you bring it on back to the library and check out a different device and try that device on your TV until you find the one that you like, and then you can go to Amazon Best Buy, purchase place of your choice, and purchase that item for your own use. But this gives you an opportunity to play with those things before you cut the cord and determine whether or not this is for you.
That's a great idea, really.
Yeah. Really well received at his last program when he announced that we would be doing this, because it does give people that opportunity. It is similar in nature to the Kindles that we've been checking out, also a program funded by the Friends, and similar to the little Ozobot maker kits that we have for kids. So checking out technology is not really a new thing for us. We also have our little wireless hotspots that you can check out when you go on vacation or that you can check out if your Internet goes down. So that's another thing that we... So we've got a lot of little devices and things that you can check out. So the thing that he is asking you to update is the loan period.
In red.
In red, yep. Make it easy for you. Check out would be one per card, just like the Kindles. The checkout period would be a week. The overdue fine would be $1 per day with a $10 max, which is the same as for Kindles. Remember, we do have auto-renew. So the likelihood is, if you don't bring it back on time, as long as nobody has a hold on it, because you can't place a hold on it, nobody has a hold on it, then it would renew and you would be able to have it for another week. We do try to help people with fine prevention on the thing. Any questions about that?
Okay. I'll accept a motion to amend the circulation policy.
I move to amend the circulation policy as presented.
Is that a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that we amend the circulation policy as presented. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Okay. Number three.
Okay. It is time to do our final year-end budget adjustments. Make sure we're all balanced out. There are no requests to move anything from fund to balance this evening. These are all just shuffling money from one account to another to make sure that we are all even in good... Yep, all even in good. So there is a... Handout in your pack of the list like this? Little spreadsheet?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. So if you look at the bottom half of that spreadsheet, that's where I have gone through and calculated out what we will be spending for the rest of the year, and you can see that there are some line items in here on the left that show the amount that I think would be available. So that OPEB is the largest amount of money. Now, you'll remember that the reason we have this big chunk of money in OPEB is because we were able to use forfeiture money. So if we have an employee who has money being put into their account, if they leave before they are fully vested, which is what happened, we had a couple of them leave before they were fully vested, they only get to keep a portion of it or none of it. So they have to be here for at least six years in order to get all of it. If they're only here for three years, they get 50%. If they're here less than that, then they do lose that fund. The money does not come back to the library. It sits there and waits for us to spend it. So we use it for contributions going forward. So this year, we had quite a lot of forfeiture money to spend down, and so we have about $11,500 in that line. Couple other line items that have some... We have a little bit in our miscellaneous books account. The audit came in, $1,000 under budget, because when we bid it out, the new contract was $1,000 less than the previous one. We came in a little under budget with legal, professional and contract services. We have a little bit of extra money there. Special events miscellaneous, that's the money I set aside so that when things like this happen, meaning the program budget goes a little over budget, I have money that I can shuffle around to make sure that we can fund those things. So miscellaneous and business and campaigns and promotions, those program lines are a little under budget. And then conferences and workshops, I will mention that because later in the agenda, we do have a request for an out-of-state travel, and I want to make sure to highlight there's $5,000 left in that budget line right now. And then also that refunds and rebates. So that's where we put money to make sure that we have money set aside, that if during board of review, somebody were to have their taxes reduced and we would have to rebate that, that we have money set aside so that we're not dipping into fund balance to do that. And there were very, very few rebate amounts this year. Yeah, so the amount we budgeted was more than needed. So we're good there. Okay, so if you pop up to the top of that same Excel spreadsheet, thank you, the lines where we are a little over budget that we need to make adjustments to, the first one...
Good you highlighted your copy.
I did, yes. So the first one is 715. 715 is our FICA, Medicare. You'll remember that when we hired a new employee, we did ship some money into the full-time line item, but we weren't sure how much we were going to want to do for the FICA, so we left that one so that we could make that calculation, instead of putting in a little bit, putting in a little bit more, we did that one at the end of the year. I'm recommending taking that from that OPEB line, where we had that money. 721 is workers' comp, we're just $500 to fill that particular line item out, that's another one that I would suggest taking from 719, that OPEB line.
Okay. Are we moving it on that OPEB to only stuff that relates to employee benefits, right?
Only the part that we've already contributed. If it's in our budget, we may move it around as we see fit. The money that is for, we make the contributions each pay period. So, when I, when we do payroll, I also make an ACH transfer that goes to MERS, and that's why they hold the money. So if we then don't need that contribution, because we have an employee that leaves and they don't get to keep that money, it reverts back to the library's forfeiture account, meaning MERS holds it for us. But their website is great, because it says, hey, you have forfeiture money, do you want to use this forfeiture money to pay this contribution, or do you really want to-
So this is, this is the money, we're able to use the money that we budgeted, because we don't need it because there's-
Yep, because I did not have to make those.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Sorry. It's hard to explain it.
It is, it's complicated.
It is complicated, yep. But because we were not making those contributions, because we were using forfeiture money, we budgeted the money way, way back in September of last year. Okay, so, workers' comp, like I said, $500 there, 722, which is short-term disability, both of, both 722 and 723, short-term and long-term disability, those are changes, because we had staffing changes, that number changed, remember, I still do it, just for balancing at the end of the year. Both of those, we just need $400, another one we can take out of 719. 818.710, that's our adult programming budget, and our head of adult services has an additional project that he put in there and asked for $1,000, which we had that miscellaneous account, which is what I set aside specifically for, that one we come up with a great idea mid-year that we're not prepared for, so. Same thing, 818.720, this one is $2,500, that one I'm suggesting we take from 818.740. Those are all, those 818.7 numbers, those are all programming budget, so we're just shuffling those around with it. This is all money that the board would have approved for programming, it's just, is it children's programming, is it adult programming, is it-
We shift in this programming.
I'm just shuffling it from, from one type of programming to another. Still within the program. Yeah. Okay, hopping down to 915. 915, that is our line for our sales tax, we don't do a huge amount of sales, but we have to set that money aside so that we can turn it over to the state, and we added that, because last year, or this last year was the first year that we were actually selling things, and so we put that line item in, but we didn't budget anything for it, because we didn't add the actual line item number until after the budget was approved. So 915 did not exist when you approved the budget in 2018 for 2019, but then in 2019, we were taking money out of a line that hadn't had money added to it, so.
You want to put a little bit in there.
Sharon, yeah, well, we've only, we've only sent $5 to the state for sales tax. So, but I'll put $10 in just in case we have huge sales in December.
That's a good one.
Yeah. Well, so the only things that we really sell are earbuds and flash drives, and those are emergency purchases for public when they come in. So many people don't need those kinds of things anymore, they come in using those kinds of things, but if you were to come in and you were working on a project and realized that you didn't have a flash drive in your pocket that you thought you had, you can run up to the desk and buy one, because we don't have a store across the street, or down the hall, or anything like that, so. So we don't do huge sales, because it's not a big revenue stream for us.
I see then.
Yep. Five dollars in sales tax, so, okay. So, 724. Yep, 924, up in, 924 is water and sewer, so we need a little bit extra in that, my perspective was from watering the lawn, usually that's what it is, but hey, when we water the flowers and lawns, sometimes it's hard to judge how much water we're going to need from one year to the next, so taking that out of that 719 OPEB money would be-
Does that include when they, when we had new sod put in and had the water extra?
That was last year, that one was the huge year, where we had to put a lot of money in. This year was not so much, but we had gone back to our original number, and apparently that wasn't really, wasn't really putting in. Yeah, so. Just depends on other nature.
Yes, so much depends on other nature.
Depends on other nature, yep.
Speaking of other nature, 931.
931, so 931 is on here multiple times, and I'm going to tell you right here and now that that is because we are concerned about snow, although we have with the December, but you just never know, all it takes is a couple of big snowstorms to blow the budget. So, I like, I like to go into December with about $10,000 sitting there. So I'm taking that from a couple of different places. I'm suggesting that we take $5,000 from that 719 OPEB number, $1,000 from 807, which is that extra $1,000 from audit, and then $4,000 from 964.703, which is that rebate line, all of which are things that were set aside, in case they were needed and they went out, so. And then these last two small ones, we've got 984.3.
Music.
Yep. And I have a little note here, help this for the next one, 984.3 is music, we were only $13 over budget, but we don't want that one not to come out evenly. And then I had a little note here that said, while the children's music budget, 984.4, is not currently over budget, the last invoice is coming in and is $8 over. So, so I'm suggesting putting in 10, just in there, but both of those can come out of 719. So if you look down at this middle column, on the lower half, you can see, I've added up where all of these are coming from, to show that all of these will remain under, so that they're not using more than what I think is surplus in most of the time. Any questions, concerns about all of that?
No, but I appreciate this, because it's very clear.
This really helps, yes, trying to find all these things.
I know, I'm sorry.
Set and forth, this, this is good.
It took me a long time to kind of get this figured out, but-
It's great.
It's not a perfect layout, I think maybe I would be a little differently, but it's better than, it's better than trying to do it verbally, and then it does allow you, because this is in the packet, to then make, make a motion to ye or nay it be into your list, if that's how we would like to handle that, so.
Does it need a vote?
Yes, it is how we-
It would like to handle that.
Yep.
Number three, I'll accept a motion for our year-end budget adjustments.
I move that we make the budget adjustments as presented on the nicely done spreadsheet.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we approve 2019 end-of-year budget adjustments as presented, and we say thank you for line, where's our OPEB line?
Oh, 719.
719, that's very helpful this year.
Any other comments or questions? If not, Alex will have a vote, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Lot of work, quick action.
Thank you. That's all right, I don't mind them that way.
Okay, number four.
Okay, this is the approval to renew our Meritas insurance plan. In 2012, the library's Employee Benefits Committee reviewed a number of options for vision and dental insurance for the library's full-time employees. The current Meritas vision plan was recommended to the library board for approval, employees are satisfied with this plan. The premiums have remained fairly stable over the course of time. The agent usually reviews these every year and looks to see if there might be a better deal for us, and has been really happy with this particular deal. You'll notice that there's actually two renewal proposals in the packet. The first renewal proposal that came in for this year included a 4% increase in dental and no change in optical. However, the insurance agent was able to negotiate a reduction in the dental renewal to just 2% and no change in optical. But because there is a change, because there is an increase, I wanted to bring it to the board and make sure that you were okay with that in the renewal. A lot of times, if they stay stable, which they have the last few years, we just put it in the consent agenda so that you know that we're just asking to renew, but this one doesn't include an increase.
A positive change.
Well, in this particular situation, it is a positive change, because we saw this 4% increase on the initial paperwork, but we don't get this initial paperwork until after we've actually written the budget. So when I talked to the agent, she said, I think it would be prudent for you to budget for a 3% increase in each. So when it came to her the first time, there was a 4% increase in one and no increase in the other, but she remembered she had told me 3%, so she went back to the company and said, hey, y'all told us it was going to be just 3%, and so she talked them down to, even though I had budgeted for a 3% increase in both. So what it boiled down to is, we're in good shape either way, and effectively, she was proactive and got us a nice decrease. It's helpful. It's, it's an increase, but it's less of an increase.
That's a, that's a very modest increase in any-
It's a modest increase and it's less of an increase than we anticipated.
All right, I'll accept a motion to approve or to renew our Meritas dental and vision plan.
I move to approve the renewal of the Meritas vision and dental insurance for full-time employees.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to renew the Meritas dental and vision plan as approved as presented. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion is approved.
Thank you.
Now, number five, the review of the state aid report.
Okay. Public libraries in Michigan are formally established through state law and must file a report with the Library of Michigan each year in order to maintain their certification. This certification verifies a library's eligibility for state aid funds, penal fine money, and governmental grants. The filing season begins in October and has an electronic filing deadline of February 1st of 2020. Within your packet, you will find the state aid report that was submitted during the current filing season. Because the library has a different fiscal year than the state of Michigan, January to December versus October to September, the report that was just submitted covers January 1st to December 31st of 2018. Now, the good news is, because I'm getting it done before the end of 2019, it's not as confusing as if I hadn't presented this in January, like I did last year, and everybody's having a hard time thinking about it being an entire year before, so. It got done a little bit sooner this year. That is thanks to the staff, the staff helped me gather all of this data, and kind of what we do is, you can see this, this 12-page document is our state aid report, lots and lots of very detailed questions. And what I do in January, when the year first ends, is I email all these questions out to the various staff members that gather these pieces of data, and we gather it in January and February, they send it to me, I put it in a folder, I take copious notes on how they calculate all of these various numbers, so we know that every year we're collecting it the same way. And my goal is to have it completely done, usually in February and March, except for the audit, which isn't usually done until later, but then I put the audit in there, and then when it comes to October, November, December, when I'm filing this data with the state, it's all tidy in a packet for me, and it's quick and easy to input. So we do the hard work in January and February, when things are a little bit quieter, so that when it gets a little crazy near the end of the year, we've got it all, all tidy and, and ready to go. So the new state aid rates have been computed for fiscal year 2020, no change in per capita this disbursement year, annual total $12,67,700 per capita breakdown of .39708 for direct and indirect state aid to public libraries. So this is, this is the amount that they anticipate, and then it is, we receive our checks based on the order in which they receive our reports. So the earlier you get your report in, the earlier you get your check.
Early in, early out.
Early in, early out, yes. So it is helpful to get your stuff in early. The next 12 pages are the actual report, with teeny tiny print, and I apologize, it is not possible to print it any bigger than this.
That's okay.
That would be the state's lovely data entry system, in terms of how it works. But if you, if you get out your magnifying glass and look at it closely, you can see that on the left-hand side, we have the data that I was entering, and on the right-hand side, we have the data that was from the previous year, which would be 2017, so you can do some comparison. Now, there is another version of this report that I can print, that would give you the actual data in a larger, to read, printout, however, then you don't get last year's data, so you don't have that comparison. So, there are certain things that I just would highlight, in terms of staffing, we are, for FTEs, full-time equivalents, we are holding steady there, we have a smidgen more, we had 22.15 FTEs, last year we had 22.39 for 2018. We saw a slight increase in our budget, which was nice. We did more in terms of capital improvements this year, or for 2018, I should say, not this year, 2018, we did some, that was the year that we did the, some of the furniture and things like that in the adult services area, we did the computer lab transition, that kind of thing. We did the heating and cooling unit in what is now the conference room, so, some nice things that we were able to do in order to maintain the building. And then the same thing, we're up a little bit in terms of what we're investing in our collections, we're seeing growth in our programming, that kind of thing. Any questions about any of that? No votes needed on that, but I do like to present it, so you know that it's been done in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
Just in case you need something for solving insomnia or-
In that case, now we can get that one, we have to number six, and review the proposal to replace the main door units.
Okay, the main, so the main entrance doors, as part of the assessment to replace the main entrance doors, we also investigated solutions regarding the motorized controls on both the interior and exterior doors. These controls were installed in 1992 when the building was built, and while they are still functional, they are not appropriate to our situation. When someone pushes the door opener buttons, the, the controls open both the left and right doors simultaneously, so you get a double door opening going into the building, then they come into that airlock and they hit the button and it opens those double doors, and we have this massive garage-sized door opening inside our building, allowing the cold to come in and the heat to go out. And the other thing is, there's, there's a change in sort of the usage of those doors, whereas people used to only occasionally use those buttons, now, because we've, as a culture, have become very accustomed to doors automatically opening, so we're more likely to use those buttons, as is perfectly fine, but opening all of the doors is maybe not necessary. ADA only requires us to open a single door with, that would, that would be ADA compliant.
Most wheelchairs would fit through-
Yep, yep, those doors are ADA compliant, and as a matter of fact, it's actually silly for us to have those double doors opening, because there's actually a rod down the middle, so opening the double doors doesn't make any difference, it's not making the doorway any wider, because that rod down the middle helps to secure the doors when we lock at night. So we can take the rod out, if we were trying to move something big into the building, but it stays there most of the time, because obviously that's what locks the door and secures the doors at night. So, upon investigation, because we are only required to open one door, and I've talked to the board about this when we told them to replace the doors, I talked to the door company and they said, well, yeah, you're right, you could just open one door, but those are Stanley door controllers, and nobody touches Stanley door controllers but Stanley Doors. So, I called Stanley Doors and I had their technician come out, and they are still functional, but because they're so old and perhaps not as sophisticated as they could be, they will open the doors, but some of them are fancy enough that you can tell it only opened the right door or only opened the left door, this one's not like that. It opens both doors or it opens no doors. Those are your choices. So, he gave us a suggestion that what we would do is replace them with a sink, a door controller that would control the right-hand door as you're walking toward the building, and just open the one, and then put manual door closers on the left-hand door to assure that the doors don't slam, that they close in an appropriate case, and that sort of thing. So those would be manual doors. Let's see, hop in here and make sure I-
Now, if you're leaving the library, would it still, would it open the left-hand, the right-hand doors?
It would still open the right-hand door, yep, it would still open the right-hand door. So, the bottom line is that limiting the opening to the size of one door would maintain ADA compliance, but should allow the heater in the airlock to better control the temperature as people enter and exit the building throughout the day. This is not a budgeted item, but is a much-needed correction that could save the library of money on its heating and cooling costs in the coming months, because this is also a problem in the summertime. There is money in line, the 808 professional contract services that could be used to fund this improvement, you'll see when we did the budget adjustments, I showed there's a little bit of extra money there, that $7,000, but I did not reassign it to anything when I was doing budget adjustments, in case you wanted to address. Now, this is just one quote, so. The reason I'm bringing it to you now is because when we did the door proposal, the board said, what are we going to do about the door openers, we had talked about that. Yep. So I wanted to bring you what I discovered, because Stanley came in, this is the proposal they gave you, we could go- We could go ahead and do this, or if you'd rather, I can go back and see if there are other companies, do some cost comparison and that kind of thing. This would be a quick fix. We do have the budget to do it. We could solve the problem before the end of winter. Or if you prefer, we can...
Well, we've used Stanley up to this point.
They have been Stanley...
They've been good.
They have been very, very good to work with.
And they're a big name in doors and...
We've had minimal issues with these door openers, other than the fact that they don't do what we really need them to do. But they are very good. When you call, they send out a technician usually within 24 to 48 hours. The only service that I've had them do on these doors since I've been here, and I will have been here almost 14 years, we blew, like a ballast, a motor on one of them and had to call in Stanley to fix that. And they were here very quickly, took care of it right away.
How long would it take them to do this if we contacted them?
According to his proposal, the lead time, I believe, was two weeks?
Five to seven working days.
Five to seven working days? Okay, thank you. He implied, he told me that this is an easy project and that this time of year, they could probably get it done by the end of the year.
I like that idea. Yes. And you know, it's not really possible to calculate how much energy we're spending, you know, with the extra cold. Right, right. So you don't have any way of knowing what the savings might be.
We're not going to be able to calculate the savings, but I can tell you that right now, with the frequency that those double doors open, the staff that are at the service desk, at circulation and the information desk, are using space heaters almost constantly this time of year because it gets so cold. Those doors open in the wind because of the way the building is set. The wind comes this way from. It just literally blows right in through the lobby, down the hallway, and fills the entire public area with cold air. In the summer, it does the exact opposite. We have the heat just flowing in when those double doors open.
As everyone knows, I'm normally a huge fan of multiple bids. My purchasing background is. But this is not such a huge expense. If there was another zero on there, I wouldn't, I would not dream of entertaining a single source. Stanley is a good name, so then we have the money.
Well, the reason that I brought this up is because I thought, you know, it is something that we could get done before the end of the year with a little bit of a surplus that we happen to have sitting there. It's not budgeted for next year, so then we would be...
Do we have money left? Don't we have money left? So given all of that, then I would not be opposed to going with that. And to that point, I would make that motion. Yeah, I made that motion. Stanley Door Operator Proposal as Presented and approve a budget adjustment of $6,800 from line 818, Professional Contract Services, to line 975, Building.
They're second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the Stanley Door Operator Proposal as presented for the benefit of our staff and...
And public.
An approval budget adjustment of $6,800 from line 818 into line 975. Any comments or questions in addition? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
I will call them up tomorrow and get that five to seven days started.
Very good. Okay. Last item on the agenda is the review of a request for out-of-state travel. This comes from Evan Schmale, who is our head of adult services. We don't do a lot of out-of-state travel because it is expensive. But he is requesting, having attended the Public Library Association PLA Conference in the past, he has found that there are many more valuable programs than the times that I have gone to the Michigan Library Association, MLA Annual Conference. In 2020, the PLA Conference is fairly close in Nashville and includes a number of sessions that would be beneficial to our upcoming collaborations, dementia programming census, reaching out to senior adults, and to me professionally, meaning Evan, hiring staff about programming and leadership. Information from these sessions could be shared with coworkers at the all-staff meetings and librarian meetings. He did ask me about the possibility of going to PLA in Nashville from February 27th to 29th. And I suggested that he apply for the Library of Michigan's Professional Development Grant. I have submitted the grant and awards will be announced in mid-January. However, early bird registration expires on December 20th of 2019. Y'all, y'all, next week. He's seeking permission to attend PLA prior to receiving notification of the grant awards because the cost is significantly less if he registers before December 20th. Just in case he does, that we do not receive the grant, the burden of the 2020 conference budget would be significantly reduced because the registration fee would already be paid. Either way, if I receive permission to go to PLA, I will forego requesting permission to attend MLA in 2020 in order to allow others to attend. So essentially, an application for the Library of Michigan Professional Development Grant has been submitted. We have received this grant in the past. The one that got Trevor to Texas for the marketing conference that he wanted to go to. You can only apply every other year. We did not apply last year. So I called him, checked, and made sure we were eligible. And we are. There's no guarantee that we'll get it, but you know, it's like there's a good opportunity.
But we've gotten them before.
There is currently adequate funding in the remaining 2019 conference budget. You'll see there was that $5,000 surplus that we could pay for his registration fees. And even if we did not get reimbursed for that, we would still be okay. The money would be deposited into the 20... If we do get the grant, it goes into the 2020 conference budget. Or it could be returned to fund balance if you prefer. If we do not receive the grant, the 2020 conference budget would only need to cover the flight and hotel.
Sounds like you're very ambitious and...
It sounds like you're doing...
I seem to get on into the rest of the world and find out what's going on.
I mean, they are definitely having some programs that...
Would be beneficial.
Some sessions that would apply to things that we're doing here.
Plus, he did the research.
The estimated $1,500, is that just the airfare and hotel, or is that...
No, that includes everything. That's the registration, airfare, hotel, meals, everything.
That seems reasonable.
And we did, we had fewer people than we anticipated wanting to go to MLA this year. That's why there's that little bit of a surplus there. We did send, we did send a lot of people out into the world this year. Everybody stayed pretty much in Michigan, but we did make sure that people were going to lots of webinars and classes. And we send as many staff as we can to Spring Institute, which is the children's conference that happens in the spring. All of the children's staff got to go for at least one day, so that was really nice. So we've been good about trying to get people out. This is, I think this is a nice opportunity for him.
Well, and some of the things that, you know, that we've been looking at doing, like the dementia programming, which I think is...
Important, yep.
Very important.
It is very important.
And to be able to get the benefit of what other places have done instead of kind of feeling our way blindly through it is...
Yes.
Just that alone is probably worth the $1,500, so...
Okay, in that case, I'll accept a motion.
I so move.
And moves that we approve the request for Evan Schmale to attend the 2020 annual conferences presented. They're second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to allow Evan to attend the conference. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
He will be thrilled. Thank you.
Nice to hear the positive side of it.